I think it's happening in Austin. That's if there's any meeting for the off on. It's probably a good one.
Oh, look, he hasn't even missed the meeting. You haven't missed the meeting.
You can't get the recording.
Okay, so with that we can.
Sorry.
Um, so tonight's meeting, we're not streaming live because we're having technical issues and after the, I don't know, 10th strike, we gave up, but it'll be recorded. I'm Don Verubie. 135 of a road.
Mike Wayne, select board rep.
And Sam Nolan, I think David Lees, your ADP is the road. Tim McDaniel, 117 Pedro.
Michael Lottin, 3A's drive.
Jonathan Patrangelo, 5 would your drive?
So since we got no minor modifications, public care and all this, we're going to move right down to new business to review. Amendments.
All right, so. Thought it was a good idea to at least have an initial look over some potential amendments tonight and then know. There wasn't any applications on the agenda for this evening. Guess never too early to get started and I'm sure there's never enough time, no matter when you start. So. Um, I did kind of a scan through the ordinance and jotted down things that have come up as maybe things that should be clarified or addressed. Throughout my time here, I'm sure you guys are even more familiar with other items. And so I kind of made a list. I have received information from the Office of Planning and Development from the state on the floodplain ordinance. And they have actually reviewed it for us and provided their suggested edits. So. That's a good place to start because 90% of the work has been done for us already. So I included that one. I have a list of things to consider and then love to hear from you all of areas you would like to work on. So I think a good idea, I can kind of go through one by one of the things I pointed out. And I try to get a sense from you all what priorities might be because I don't know if you can tackle everything. So see what you think is important and where you want to focus the energy. I believe everyone should have 2022 copies of the ordinance in front of you. Some of them are in the blue binders. Some of them are printed, fresh ones that things were made. So everyone should have a 2022 version to refer to. So hopefully we should all have the same page numbers and everything. All right, 2.02 is just the effective date. So when we need to update that, that one's easy. 3.02. I've noticed that the definition of a butter is different in various places. And maybe that's deliberate, maybe it's, but here in 3.02 in the definitions, it says the definition is as defined in RSA 67243. In other locations, I believe in the subdivision regulations, there's a different definition. So.
The definitions differ, do you know?
Um, one of them includes all properties within 200 feet of the property. The other is just the properties that touch it or directly adjacent. So.
Yeah.
I think if we get a consistent definition across all of our uses for planning and zoning board, I think it would make our lives easier.
Yeah, so. And I know I've always been the assumption that it was all within 200 feet. You talk a lot about us. Just, you know, for especially for that notification. List.
I don't know if it matters what definition you choose. I just from relationship.
It should be. So. Does it? I'm just wondering if it matters. So for 200 feet, I think makes sense when you're notifying. But is there another scenario where it would be more appropriate if it was directly connected or across the street or? I don't know what that would be, but. But notification, it's 200 feet per notification, I think makes sense, but I don't know if that would, it would be restrictive for other things. Can't think of what.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of where that comes into. But I mean, most of the time it's when you're notifying.
Right.
Which here it is nice to have that 200 feet.
Yeah, because that will generally capture across the street. Actually across the street. And it's easy to do with the GIS software. We can just type in 200 feet and draw the little bubble. And you follow the definition you have to. You can usually we set it to 100 and you kind of look, but then you have to look, okay, is this one touching it? Is it touching the 200? It's easy. GIS doesn't work.
I mean, when, when else does that a butter come into?
For notification. It's really.
Notice the preliminary application, notice the public final application. As I'm going to see where it was referencing though. This is, yeah, this is the subdivision, right?
Yeah, so we.
The right one because I don't see any reference to 200 feet.
Right, maybe it might go somewhere else. So I can track down where all the different, different versions of it are and maybe blame all out and if you're all leaning towards 200 feet, that's helpful input for me to work from.
Well, all of when the oddly was looking to do them. Oh, this is the concrete, right? Which is kitty corner across the road. I was actually going 200 feet, so I didn't get notified.
Right.
I mean, not officially anyways.
Is it 200 feet from the center of the property?
No, from the line.
So there's no way you have an adjacent property. Like you, it wouldn't tell me the play whether the adjacent property that would be less than 200 feet like a tour basically cover all of these and every scenario.
Pretty much. I mean, I'm on, um, where, where Vaughn Road hits River Road. Like, um, you know, that corner to get to where the actual property marker is on the next one. Yeah, you know, crossing the way you got Vaughn Road to come to Cross and you know, it's just, but pretty much anywhere is you're gonna, you would get that 200. Sometimes it's kind of surprising how many people you gotta notify.
It, it does say 200 feet in the, in the subdivision, right?
So basically what that means is that we've used the 200 for planning for things because site plan and subdivision rights will say 200 feet, but the zoning board doesn't say the definition of the zoning ordinance. But.
Which is direct above.
Right. All right. So I think moving on, moving on. Um, I noticed in the definitions as well, the one for temporary structures and uses. Means like it's not really a definition. It's actually like actually the ordinance around temporary structures and uses. Still misplaced in the definition.
You just would like to edit it down. Should just be the definition temporary, like starts on sort of lines, 70 temporary structure, include tents, fabric shelters, et cetera.
Basically, yeah, this is everything about which I think actually appears.
So that's enhanced.
I will see if I can find it elsewhere, but that's just something it feels, I don't know if you agree, but I didn't think, I felt like it was a lot more than a definition.
There's definitely a rule there.
Right. Um, so I will check to see what it was. Fourth point is two talks about the official zoning map. It talks about the, the firm, the blood insurance rate map and um, we're getting a new version. So I believe those dates will need to be updated and we'll get that information from the Office of Planning and Development to make sure we're referencing it correctly.
We just got that a couple of months ago.
Right. And that's why they're updating the floodplain ordinance right now too. So that's a simple thing. There. Uh, here's a more interesting one. Daycares. In the table of use regulations, which is 5.11. Daycares show up in various forms multiple times. Um, and I think some of it's deliberate and I also think that perhaps there's an error involved in there some because you will find um, 5.11, the table of uses, so page 19. Yeah, we can. Do you want to go back or do you want me to go through mine and then?
He wanted, he was page 58.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
It's up to the group. Yes.
Where are you?
Well, page 14. Flood insurance rate map. You said we're in the process of updating that. And the aquifer protection plan. Uh, it uh, references the bowl master plan dated September 2004. And that's an old date. They can do this 2017.
November 17.
Yeah, yeah. Maps, maps aren't in here at all. Is there a way that we could include them?
Um, in the digital version, it might make sense. I don't know if.
It's just too small.
I think it's going to be too small to see in the printed. The printed version. Unless they're like a fold out that comes with it, but it's a lot of, it's a lot of, it's expensive to print them. They'd have to be in color.
You know, to, to list in here where you can find it. That link to get to. That might be, that might be a good idea.
Yeah.
Is to list what, not put in there. A link as to where you can go to find them. Yeah.
I think it's good to have them in there and then tell where you can find them to.
Because even though you can't read it in there, you have a.
Yeah, and you know, you could, that you have lights and ice.
You know, that. If you just do the district separately. You know, zone in on that.
Yeah.
You know, um. It wouldn't have to be in color.
Might be able to get something.
I do like a, um, for work when I do a, you know, like a permitting document that has plans in it.
Yeah.
I'll have like, I'll typically put an eight and a half by 11 as a plan and then like a full size one folded back so that if you really wanted to look at it, you could pull out the, the full size one, but if it's just for reference, just want to look at the thing. So somebody could look at the small one and say, well, I can't read this and then you still online.
You should be able to do 11 by 72, just fold it.
It just makes it, it makes it bulkier. Because you gotta fold it. You gotta fold it like three times. Yeah.
Yeah, we can explore that more.
Another thing that does make it easy to include a link is a QR code.
I was just thinking that.
Which is really easy to grab. Or you go to the page on Google, share, create QR code. Okay, we did that with our catalog this year. Every page you can scan, it brings you to all of it. So. There it is. Even though you're putting, you're putting in a small piece that you can zoom in.
I think when you go to black and white on that, it's going to be hard to tell the difference between the shading of the different black and whites when it gets into the.
You really drive.
I, I mean, we print a lot of this. So they get distributed to the couples. I don't know as much how many people actually take them now versus, I think they used to print.
I like the QR code idea of just putting the QR code as reference in there is in. Yeah, I think that's simple.
I guess I don't, I don't think I would print them if they weren't in color.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was going with it. Like, I think once you go to black and white on that, I think you're not going to be able to tell the difference between the shade of the grays in there between like the yellow and the orange as an example.
Wow, second. A particular area. And print that, not the environment. But that gets tough because what area are we looking at? You know, the idea of having a map is what, what part of town am I looking at? Let me go, uh. Let's see.
I think if you blow that up, then you got even more pledges that you're adding into as well. I mean, like, uh. I, I like the QR code because I think most people are aware that if they want to go find it, they're easy, that's easily accessible. And for us, if we're in here, that would be easy for us to easily say, oh, I need to see it without going over and looking at those.
And it would be like some people who are viewing it like on a computer will just click on the link.
Yeah. With the, you're the black and white map. I mean, if, if there's a piece in there, so yes. The map we're going to go look at. If, if it's not the whole town, you zoom in on an area where, you know, where am I looking at? Well, I was saying like the bowl mix use district. Just take a, uh, print that and open it on an eight and a half, 11 by 17.
Who's requesting copies of the, the zone?
I don't think it might be, I don't think, I guess probably because.
Yeah, because now people, you know, actually do want to look at it. They're going to look at it on a computer.
So if it was a PDF, people, it was part of like a PDF.
Yeah, the online version had the maps of.
Yeah.
Big, this is good, but the printed versions is, uh, you know, the other big pieces, the cost of doing.
Just a thought.
Yeah, that's what we're here for.
League area.
Yeah, so my next thing is, um, 5.11, the table of uses. Anyone else does anything before then? Yeah, I haven't gotten there yet. So it's under 5.11 in the table of uses. Under B, public and institutional, you'll see that there are child daycare center and adult daycare center. And then separately, there's a home based daycare. And.
Home basis down bottom of the.
Okay, so that's under public institution. And then also under accessory uses. So accessory to a residential use, we have a home based daycare. And then we also have. Yeah, 25. And then again, on 26, accessory residential and non-residential child daycare. So it shows up a lot of times. And so the, obviously there is a, a difference between a daycare center and a home based daycare. But it's confusing to me that there's a home based daycare that's an accessory to a residential use. But there's also home based daycare that's a public and institutional use.
Yeah, it wouldn't be home based if it was threaded.
And they have different, um, different permitted. Uh, home based daycare as an accessory to a home use, which is the definition of a home based daycare. It's in a home. Um, is permitted in all the districts. But a home based daycare that's public and institutional.
Yeah, it's not a home.
There's no such, I don't understand how that's possible, but it's only permitted in certain districts. So it's just a head scratcher, I guess.
Both referencing the same.
Yeah.
RSA.
Yeah.
So what would your recommendation be?
I think the public and institutional one should go away. Because I don't understand how it would be home based if it's public institution. I only way it can be home base is if it's accessory to a residential. Right? Because that's what a home based daycare is. And then the others, child daycare center.
You know, like all of my own.
Nope.
It's a what? Oh, gorgeous. All talked to.
No, we're talking to the contractor. Yes.
Yeah, I don't know.
So your recommendation, we need to just cancel out B12 and stick with the two excessive, stick with the accessory one.
But what I'm confused, what I'm confused about is why would there be differences in the regulations for the district? Because they're all permitted use under the accessory. But they're special exception required under the public and institutional home based.
What is?
Right, yeah, I don't understand that.
Well, that's why it should just come off. That wasn't there with.
Your question would be whether you would want any restrictions on those industrial district, right?
Yeah, that's my question, but then it's opposite for the accessory child daycare under C. It's the opposite. It's special exceptions for RU, R and R1 districts, but it's permitted in the.
So I see that one. I don't know, correct, but I saw it's accessory. So I see it as maybe a business that has a child daycare center onsite for their employees. Maybe if it's accessory. I mean, it's there with like wind generation. Um, inside. I think it's an accessory use, that's accessory to my human business.
But then why wouldn't they, uh, yeah, I I see where you're going with it, but then wouldn't that be under the non-residential rather than residential?
So they don't have to solve it tonight, but.
I think, I think we probably agree with this. B12 should get removed. I guess my question is whether we want to add any, if the restriction should be changed on that accessory one.
Yeah, it feels inconsistent on 25 and 26. To say if it's a residential accessory it's permitted. But then on page 26, it's residential and non-residential. Which, yeah, is more broad, but then it says it's not permitted, special exception. So those are.
There's a difference between the one that's on page 25 is a home based daycare that's in someone's.
Oh, and this was a child daycare center.
Child daycare.
Got it. Got it, okay. That makes sense.
Right.
Exactly. Yeah, the home base is limited to six.
Right. And if that was like in a rural district, then it makes sense that, yeah.
I think believe the 12 on page 19, I think that, I think that worked. Take another look at it, but as a first go around, I think that works.
Yeah.
Um. I'm going to move on to 6.06 unless anyone has anything on the team. Um, 6.06 is about driveways. There's an inconsistency between this and the driveway ordinance. Um, here it says that driveway should be located a minimum of 15 feet from side property boundaries. And in the driveway, um, ordinance, it says 10 feet. So I don't know which one should be changed, but I think they should match.
I agree they should. You know, I and I probably with the lesson. You know, 10 feet is still. I mean, see. I don't see a reason to not allow it within. I mean, you would want it on the property. I mean, we, we get them. I know we get, let's see that they.
Just you.
Yeah.
It might be over.
Do we want to say something like has to be X feet away from another driveway?
The possibility.
What would be the point of that?
I don't know, just sticking to that White Rock Hill thing where you've got driveway right next to each other. Just.
Yeah. I mean, you're coming out.
Let me, uh.
Oh, yeah, those. They're those like skeletons outside.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's good five feet going to make a difference.
Well, no, I mean, maybe it's more than, if it's 10 feet on either side, then it could be 20 feet apart and like, I don't know, maybe we want to be.
I mean, a few driveways out. I mean, how far apart are they?
They're probably 50 feet apart.
Yeah. That'll drive by in every case.
I don't know.
20, 20 feet isn't much. What's this for? Yeah, you gotta, yeah. We'll go. No, the, I think the ten feet's.
Right, um.
We, you know. Now that right rock now would have been able to share driveway, and it would only have been one. So we kind of fixed that from happening again.
If it's ten feet, the closest they could be together is twenty. So I'll say in like, well, you just put something. You can't have two driveways that are. Oh, cause like those, those houses were built together. If I'm buying a lot, and so it's been a driveway twenty years ago, why should I be impacted by where they put the driveway? It should just be a set rule about my law.
I mean, if the brown hill property ended up with one, one driveway going in there, I mean, it'd have to be in the other news. Because they're, because they're already, the driveways are already on, on their neighbors.
Our shared driveway is also dependent from the property line too, because I can see a situation where they're neighboring lots and. Possible. Leaving or may not make sense to do that.
Good question.
So I, I'm in looking through all this, it looks like we've got a difference in the grading as well. So in the zoning, it's uh, twelve percent and, and the subdivision is ten percent.
For drivers.
For driveway. So.
I wonder what the driveway.
It says ten percent in the subdivision regulations for driveway.
Yeah, and Public Works kind of manages the driveway ordinance, so we should probably.
I would think there's some standard on that, like. Yeah, so then.
And I mean, we, I know we've just recently put in the. Shared driveways are permitted, but that's a good, you know, we're talking about how far off the property line. Obviously, that's gonna.
They're neighboring lots.
Yeah.
I don't know how we address that. You say that common driveways are not subject to that?
Well, I mean, that would be the idea, and so that driveway could be right. On the property, yeah. I mean, cause at some point, they're gonna be, the driveway is gonna be. Crossing the property line.
Yeah.
It has to be clear that the shared driveway has to be on the. On the property line of the, or can be on the, or cause like, cause then, cause then we could say, oh, you put it on, yeah.
The existing.
The existing driveway that's right across from it.
On either side. They want to put a street in there.
Yeah, there's violate that.
Yeah, I would.
I'm just reading this.
Yeah.
Trying to think.
I was reading, I was reading the same thing.
Alright. It makes, making the plan business subdivisions, and I. Tried to dig into what that really means, and didn't come up with a lot. We have a kind of a. Weak definition, I think, um, and not really much of an explanation of how you would actually use that. I don't know if it's something the board wants to look at or not.
I can go back because when I, you weren't here from the story. Matt wanted me to. Permit it as that, I can't remember why, I'll have to go back and. Yeah, there was something, there was some.
What was your solo thing called again?
Uh, very low. Soldiers.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I'm one of that great neighbor.
Quiet.
Yes. You hear electric.
So in seven point two three is where actually this plans. Because there is a discussion of whether. The flatly project would fall into this um, category. On page sixty-two. Uh, it's referenced in. Six point seven as well.
It was a frontage thing.
I almost wonder if. This maybe just states here and in the subdivision regulations, there's more of a section about. The mechanics of how you actually apply for this, or what, like, what is actually the process around it? How do you? How do you reply as a planned business of? You just write a letter saying that that's what you're doing and stick it on to the application, right?
So some, an applicant would have to want to reduce the minimum lot size frontage. Or yard requirements, those are the benefits, right? And that maximum lot coverage.
But I think. Do we need to know what, what would qualify as a planned business subdivision? Does a mixed-use development from business subdivision because it's residential?
Say that again.
Like, what would actually qualify as a planned business subdivision? Would a mixed-use development be considered a business? Residential component.
Yeah, it's confusing, cause in non-residential zone district.
Exactly. I'm guessing this was here before the mixed-use district existed, maybe? So I think we'd need to be clarified whether. We'd want this to apply to a mixed-use development.
So is there a difference where like in a mixed-use residential? It's gonna be pretty much. Rented. Property versus. Residential district, it's all, you know, part. You know, is there, is there a difference of that, whether it's an apartment or house?
Hmm, I mean, it's just the way that it says in non-residential zone district.
Because now we're mixing. Which almost needs its own.
There a way to see if this was part of the. Zoning regulations prior to the mixed-use.
Yeah.
Cause I'd be curious if that was. The intent was that that was in place before the mixed-use district was created.
I mean, I would say mixed use is not a residential zone. It has.
But is it non-residential?
A residential zone is a particular thing, a mixed. Use is a particular thing.
Yeah. Yeah, you're, I mean.
I mean, it could be made.
You can have residential and a mixed-use zone.
Right, so I, I would say that this could apply. As I read it. Yeah. I would read it like strictly, like. Residential zone district is defined. As X. Mixed use is defined as Y. This is X. If it's not X, then it applies, so. Whereas I think like, you're thinking. There's residential properties there, so it's confusing, so. But why the flally project, like, why would they want to use this?
Well, they just got a variance for hundred jobs on Tuesday night.
Oh, frontage. Who are they, for the zoning board? Is that where they were all out there?
Yeah, he had all the cars, yeah, they went to the night before the. Yeah.
Yeah, which, and that's just so. They could do. Wells. That were public, well, that's the biggest. Thing I think, right, that was the lot of the reason of.
They didn't share about at the meeting.
They didn't.
That they need less frontage for wells.
When you. When they have, after you have so many. Units on a well, it becomes a. Public water system. Which changes. The, a lot of the regulations of it. That's how we're gonna explain it, man.
Uh, and that's why they need that.
We'll get to hear more about that.
And, yeah, so. Maybe not a major thing, but. Um. Seven point ten here I was very familiar with. Is. So. The. Our communication committee is putting out an R F P. Um, to sort of the proposals for um, an R F engineering plan at the town, which would also include. Review of this zoning board. Uh. Could come back with some recommended improvements that would kind of. Try it in with the R F plan that they create, um.
That was posted to that.
So I would say unless you have specific things you want to address in this, I think it might make sense to see what recommendations come out of that. Obviously. Those recommendations would come back to the planning board, um, but we can get some professional eyes on it, we thought that might be best because. At least on the telecommunications committee, we all felt that none of us had the expertise to do that.
What is that plan that they're? What is that?
So. They would look basically at an map of the town and look at where the coverage is, where are the gaps, and like, where would be the. Optimum place to locate towers in the future to provide coverage.
Why are they doing?
Um, do you want to talk?
Kind of came out of the town meeting. Last year or the year before. That they wanted an R F study. As to where we place towers. Cover the town.
The goal is for. How cell coverage across town that provide better.
Doesn't know that to do with the project. Uh, that was in front of us.
I'm saying has nothing. I think there's a recognition that even if for when that tower is built, there will still be gaps.
No, the committee to, to do that was made after. Right.
Yes.
I mean, I saw the judge knows one of us. Which one?
Yeah, that was kind of strange.
Yeah.
I don't know any judges. Is it this, they said the slack word, David Stack told the slack word that, that the judge realized. When they went to hear it, that they knew one of the planning board.
It was scheduled on Monday and we got a notice on Friday.
That's just an appeal, right? Of the decision.
Yes.
Alright, so wait, so you're saying wait on seven ten?
Unless any of you have, I mean, I think. Probably the thing that jumps out the most that you might want to consider is the tower height. Is it reasonable?
We talked about that, that maybe should have been done for this whole thing. They let the town vote on whether. You don't, you don't need a variance to build a hundred and ninety foot tower, we talked a few. Yeah, but.
So I guess, yeah, is ninety feet basically? In twenty twenty-three.
It seemed based on the conversations. That we had, it wasn't reasonable anymore. But.
But what is, right?
Yeah, what, what is this?
I would say below.
Under, under needing a light.
Yeah, under two hundreds of, like, not putting a light on it, but.
And I don't know, and I think isn't there still some cases where if it's the right elevation under two hundred could still require a light? You know, that I, I think would be more of the ideal is if it, if, if it. Has a FAA requirement to be lit is where it would need. The variance.
The one thing that.
I was just gonna say, I'd just be curious what comes back from the, that input before we start dissecting what. Cause I, I think there are parts of that. Just recalling. Dealing with that application. At least I made notes of a couple of items that we probably should have changed, but hey, it was one of them, I think the other thing was the. The camouflage, the stealth facility versus stealth technology is out of date. So. But.
Yeah.
I would say, let's see what. The. Professional comes back with before we start.
Yeah. One. Model that I think is interesting, I think it was draft, good one, and so they had the R F study, which. Identified, I think maybe three different areas that would be the prime locations for towers, and then. They actually need those into overlay districts in their zoning one, so it connected the study to the zoning, um, and. So zoning prioritized placement in those overlay areas. Um, versus just a tower anywhere someone wanted to put one, um, and then also there were different height. Limits in different areas, one I think maybe had more sensitive view shed, that's a. You know, a lake or something, and they had lower height limit there versus the other location, so. There are some creative ways to do it. Doesn't have to be the same height everywhere in town, and I don't remember exactly how they incentivized the. Selected locations, but it was somehow incentivized through an overlay district. They actually had a map that showed like little circles, like these are where we want our towers. Yeah, but that's what the experts are. So the shop everyone had three locations. Not talking dozens.
Well, we don't know, it's, but it's. Depends on the.
Yeah. The next thing I had is in seven point oh one, so anything else?
That was part of the. Able to discuss.
The one I want to eat is the. Table of uses for wetlands. I know I've talked to Sandy about it some. Um, in particular, the. Erection and construction of structures shows that it's not permitted at all. And I believe it should be by conditional use permit in the.
Were you seeing?
Um.
How far?
One, two, three, four.
Uh.
Um, so it shows not permitted. And I believe it's really. Common use of a wetland CUP is, for example, shed or.
Corner of a building.
Corner of a building is a structure in the wetland buffer. It's a pretty common use of this wetland CP. And we have a dash instead of a C there.
Some others be. A C like. Training, dredging, filling, or. Changing water, like, I don't think about that guy that was here that made his yard. Over there, that's, isn't that what this is?
I don't know which guy.
The house, the guy who wanted to expand his yard and wetland.
Oh.
Oh, the one that was just here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Needs all three of those.
Yeah, so I think this just needs some work, and I think Sandy was going to work on it some.
Yeah, I would agree with Adam on erection and then recontoring, grading, and then the draining on those three.
And then, so the very last one, I think maybe can end as somewhat the catchall, but I it's confusing to me. Um.
Yeah, excuse me.
And maybe.
What is the basis?
So that would be the, you know, rural residential, commercial, whatever.
Yeah, that's your get a jail free card. That one.
I guess so. I just don't understand why, so for example, a structure, let's say it's a shed that is a permitted use in the residential district.
What it's all basically saying. You can do any, with a permit, you can do anything. Except in prime wetlands. Is that what I would read that as?
I guess, and I just don't understand why, like, why also stuff there. I I just find that very.
Yeah, when you just apply the. The three Cs all the way up this. That if the last one effectively is saying Cs go all the way up that chart.
All that's something that's permitted, so that's what I said, so it's like pollution of wetlands, is that allowed? With a conditional use permit, but no, because that's not permitted.
Yes, but those three things that we were talking about. Put in the C there, those are. You can build structures in this district.
And then contouring the land.
I would take a closer look at it because the pollution is that you have to define pollution is pushing soil into a wetlands pollution. Some people might say yes. But some people might call it just recontoring, grading of that.
Yeah, I'm hoping Sandy can put her experience of work on, come back with some recommendations. And point oh two, we have, um. I think it's the next item here, we actually have recommendations from the office of planning development. Um, that helps make the ordinance. Come into compliance with FEMA and the. I P.
What, oh, these are your, I read these are your recommendations.
These are from the office.
Sorry, not you.
Oh, not mine.
Yes, the experts recommend.
The experts. So they look pretty straightforward, you know, and one thing I was wondering about.
This is a typo that's showing ten point oh one on this copy?
Traveling. Yeah.
We go high.
So that's important. Um. This is one. So under on page VI. And there's the. And then. Formatting makes it a little hard to go out on here. For. C four on page VI. Um, so for all newer substantially injured structures in the special flood hazard areas, they have to furnish the fall into the building inspector. And so the first one is the as-built elevation of the lowest floor. Typically, so I asked if. They recommend requiring an actual elevation certificate. They said that is the recommended means of collecting that information. The only requirement is that we. Get the as-built elevation of the lowest floor and whatever form we get that on is up to us, but. The kind of standardized official way to get that is on an actual elevation certificate. So something to consider for the. Going above and beyond the bare requirements that they were put in there for us.
What's an elevation certificate?
Somebody was going to ask, um, it's. I believe stamped by an engineer, and it is a standardized form that has. It basically is kind of, it's a certificate that says the lowest. Um, floor elevation is X and I'm an engineer and I certify that that's what it is.
If we didn't, if we didn't ask for that, though, like what other means would they provide just?
It's just as.
Based off of.
They could write a number on it, right? Say this was the as-built elevation of the lowest floor.
So this is the lowest.
And I do know there is a community rating system. The CRS program as a program that towns can enroll in. Um, and it's a very complex point system where you can do all these different activities that kind of. Helped better protect your community from flooding, um, and people who have to purchase flood insurance actually get a discount on their flood insurance based on your rating in the CRS. Um, and if you participate in the CRS, that's one of the required things you have to require elevation certificates. That's one of the. There's lots of options of different things you can do, but that's you have to do elevation certificates, they can be part of the program. So.
Since it's having to be furnished to the building inspector, we asked the building inspector what their preference would be.
Hopefully we'll have one soon.
I didn't realize.
Gorgi. Well, they're both talking about. Parts of the region.
Okay, so once that is.
Yeah.
So. I guess if if it doesn't get filled before we have to make the recommendation for the adjustments, can they provide? I'm just curious like what they would want, what they would want to see, cause otherwise to to your point, like they just say, oh, yeah, it is. With no proof of.
Yeah.
Can that help somewhere?
Yeah, I mean, and I asked, I did ask the office of planning development, because they're the flood experts. They said that they do. Using. It says it's up to the town, but they do always. I think it's a, it is a small expense to, yeah.
You know, I guess that what point is. You know, that required, and it looks like you gotta be.
Well, you gotta be in the flood, special flood hazard area.
Yeah. Yeah, so if you're in that area, probably. No way you're really at.
There isn't a fact, it just came out. Now, fairly certainly, if you're the homeowner, I need to purchase flood insurance. You have to show that. So the town already has a file. It would be, it would be a small, you know, can be convenient and savings to the homeowner as well.
I mean, I'm leaning towards saying that it should be included there just because otherwise. There's like, it's very vague as to what the building inspector is gonna. Required to prove or disprove that it's. As built elevation. Alright.
Checklist.
Hmm. Yeah. It's really a building.
It's a building, it's very different.
Yeah. Yeah.
These are their topics.
Yeah, so these are other things that have just kind of popped up in my mind here, um. I think. I mentioned small scale or artisan scale manufacturing in the McKeese district. I think the brewery brought that to light, uh, we had to get. Uh, uh, variants to allow brewing, um, and I think there's lots of other. I found some great examples of definitions of what small scale manufacturing means. Um, sometimes it's about small scale, sometimes it's called artisan, but you think about a pottery studio, um, woodworking, um, just. Small scale, one or two people in a shop creating something. Yeah. Um.
Yeah, I mean, now it's kind of required, so the brutal needs. Need that.
Right. Right, yeah, it's manufactured.
Yeah.
But when you say manufacturing is a fraud, and we think you want to allow this part of manufacturing, not all of it. So I think next time I can bring in some examples I've found of definitions of small scale and. Have you guys take a look at those?
Seems like a sign shop.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'll bring you guys some examples next time.
Yeah.
Um, I feel tiny homes are always a question, I feel like in towns, um, I don't know if it's something we want to dive into or not, I just wrote it down. Um, our ordinance is. Silent, I would say on it, um, we do have. Uh, provisions for camping trailers, which I think a town, a tiny home on wheels probably fall into that category, they're allowed temporarily, I think it's fifteen nights. It's a very limited number of of nights per year, basically, um. So I don't know if that's something. Maybe not something for this year, it's not super pressing, but it's something.
If it's not an issue, maybe it's not as a priority as.
We occasionally get, we do.
But she wanted to put some tiny houses on her property adjacent to her house. To accommodate veteran, homeless veterans.
You're right, wouldn't it be able to do that, right?
Yeah, you get more accessory dwelling unit, right? I mean, that's what.
And attached.
Sounds attached.
Yeah.
You can't have multiple.
We have.
Well, we.
Um, I do occasionally get requests about that, also sometimes for people who would like to live on a property while a home is under construction.
Well, that's covered, right? No, that's not covered.
That only is, uh, if your home is destroyed, you can have a removal, a manufactured home off site temporarily.
That's really rough, yeah.
So. Let me consider, same thing, um. Well, new last name. Yeah, I actually have a request right now.
For camper on the property.
A tiny home on wheels, so essentially a camper, right?
Yeah, that's, that's a whole big camper.
We also have questions about weirds occasionally. So there are some of those out there things that people do ask about them, and it's tough to come up with an answer. Um, same thing with short-term rentals, obviously a question everywhere, I'm sure.
Which is like the verbal type.
Yeah, Airbnb.
Rehabilitation program.
Um. I have a folder of stuff from Matt Taylor of kind of decisions that administrative decisions that had been made that sort of set precedent, and there is one that was a. I'd say it was more of a rooming house type situation, and he classified it as a rooming house. I think it was a larger. Um. Building with multiple rooms, maybe, I don't know where it was or what it was, but it wasn't just a one house and rent out on weekends. Um, it had multiple rooms, and he classified that as a rooming house or boarding house, and there's a decision about that. Um, other than that. I don't know.
With this. State of the ability of towns to regulate that. Cause like Conway was in.
Yeah, that was.
Litigation over it, right? Because Conway was.
Gosden as well. Gosden has an issue with it.
They won't move on my health for the weekend, so somebody can give you. You know. I I wouldn't, but why not, you know, I could see.
I I knew Gosdon is an issue, cause my brother-in-law bought a house specifically with a detached section. That he was planning on doing Airbnb for income, and they ended up putting it in after the fact. And he had to go and fight it, so I know that Gosdon had an issue with it.
Yeah, so I just know it's a hot topic, so I don't know if you want to go for that, and it's similar being. Um, detached ADUs are always a question too, we require them to share a common wall with the with the home. So if you have someone has like a detached garage or an apartment above it, you have to do that. So. I don't.
What was the thought process on?
That's my question. You kind of know a lot of.
What's the, disconnected by a breezeway is good?
Have to share a common wall, um, with the like conditioned state, so if it's an open breezeway, that doesn't work, it has to be a closed in like heated breezeway. Then it's not really breezeway. But we get questions about ADUs, it was.
Those ADUs.
Accessory dwelling. In my part.
It, you know, I think in today, I mean. With the lack of housing in the locker, you know, it's. Yeah, I can see a lot of people wanting to be able to do that.
Yes. Very controversial, um, there's a couple of things, people call me all the time about, yeah, I'd like to put this here a little up, and. A lot of things I struggle to fit into the boxes of the uses you say this. Um. So like gyms and dance studios, like, okay, what is it? Is it? Personal and business services, that one's the broad one that maybe, um, but it. There's just examples like that of things, um, I had one today, like a fencing company, what is it?
Fence, fence or fence? Source.
I mean, that's a, that's.
There's a lot of things that are. Right. I think that one I was gonna call sales of construction equipment with outdoor display. But, um, yeah, just. Things come up all the time that are hard to, um. Piece in, um. Restaurants with outdoor seating, and we don't have a lot of restaurants. Um, but outdoor seating is a. Ever since the pandemic, obviously, that's become a hot topic. Uh, it's. So we do have restaurants with service. Um. So I guess that's. Right, so the brewery wants outdoor seating, yeah. So.
I mean, I don't know what kind of mission with Jing Lee had outside. I do, I do, yeah. I don't know if they have a server, it's served as a smoking area.
So just to, either this kind of. Like, think of it. Um, and then. We've had more than one issue, um, with. People running like heavy equipment companies. Businesses in their yards. Um, and storing heavy trucks and equipment in rural and residential zones. Um. And again, it's hard to. Point to one thing to say you are in violation of this, you cannot do that, um. Do you call it, I think. The concept of calling it a contractor's yard. Um. But maybe there's something that needs to be spelled out clear somewhere that says. You cannot store heavy. Equipment in your, well, and then it's if you own heavy equipment for personal use versus. Is it in the name of a business that you're running from your home in a residential district?
Yeah, I mean, all this is the. You know, the the guy that does has one dump truck that he brings home and, you know, where is that one?
But can you have six dump trucks?
But you can have six.
It all depends. People that care about it, they see it here.
So just some, some topics to think about. These are the things that come to my desk. Uh, I think in general the site plan and subdivision, right, need a lot of work, but I want to focus on zoning, on the on the on the block for this. But.
The mini horses over on uh. How many mini horses is a horse?
Exactly, I had a one.
Yeah, I know there's an issue to have having horses and so many.
They have like six boom horses or something.
You know, do you need, do we need to change it to how many pounds of horse?
I had one calling who was got a move about, but she wasn't sure about the mini horses too, yeah, at least that's the things that people call about. No one's called about the U's yet. Any other areas that they think should be on?
No, the one, the one thing that popped up was the cell phone tower stuff, so we can avoid the prolonged nature of that again, so it'll be interesting to see what that comes back there.
I don't know what day you would put it as required.
It's like October, even earlier. It was, it was relatively quick, so.
So we'll keep you all up to date.
Yeah, the only thing I had struggled with is the, I do not think the regs, both the subdivision and the zoning spell out anywhere clearly basis seized for denial. And so sometimes I feel like we are in here and, and you know, I read it a particular way and I'm like on what grounds could you actually say no here, what would your finding be? I I don't think it spells it out, like if you found it doesn't do X, Y, or Z, that would be a basis. So I don't know what you think of that, but I've noted that over a handful of years here.
I can do a lot of research and see if our communities have something like that. I think so that would probably go in the subdivision and site plan, right, it's not in the zoning.
I have to look real quick. You can keep going.
What if it's, what if it's a situation where, you know, they're requesting a waiver of our requirements? And we don't think that, you know, it meets the intent of our regulations and it's not a reasonable request.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that's right, I think my, where I think it could just be improved is we should kind of say that in the regs. So I I I'll look up an example, um. Cause they're taking a bunch of notes on it, where it's felt like we're not certain, may.
Maybe they can chime in on some changes that they would like to see.
Um, the other thing is the Article seventeen, the Bo Mel's McKeese District. I think there are some improvements that could be made there, um, on Tuesday night, the design board considered um, the there's a minimum tract first there, and not a minimum lot size. And the very last line of it says so it says all legal lots of records that existed prior to the adoption of disordinants are exempt from the minimum tract size requirement. But no new lot shall be created that does not meet the minimum tract size. They're thrown around lot contracts. And so a lot is a lot bounded by lot owners, one owner. A tract is an area which can be multiple lots um proposed for development and together. So the Flatley project is made up of three lots existing, um, they want to subdivide it, but right now it's a tract made up of three lots. The zoning board found Tuesday night that they did not need a variance to the minimum tract size requirement. Um, I think they said questionable, maybe a waiver from from you guys for that, but but in essence, there really isn't a minimum lot size. And it's very confusing to me as to how this McKeese district applies to existing smaller lots like the lot, the brewery's. Um, obviously that's tiny acres, um, and how do you apply this to to small lots within that district to be redeveloped, I think it is written for the big lots. But there's a lot of other areas included in that too.
Are you working with Stu on this?
Um, sort of, we're working on some stuff right now, but. Yeah. So, yeah. So I guess if I will start working on some of these, bring you back some examples and other stuff by our next meeting. And then if anyone has any other areas they want to work on, if you want to send it to me, or if anybody wants to volunteer to work on a specific area. A quick little outline of procedures for reviewing an application, I think there's been a few times recently where like maybe some of the steps go by a little faster or overlooked a little bit, and all of a sudden somebody's making a motion and you're approving the application.
I just read this, that maybe know your own procedures better.
I want to use, have tools to help all of you shoot this more.
No, I think this is great, if we just have this checklist all up on the wall.
So the public can see it as well, actually would be helpful sometimes, then they understand.
That's actually a pretty good idea.
So that they understand that there is like, step four is where they get to come and say everything they want to say. And then we have to come back and actually get down and do stuff, that's not the worst thing, well.
Uh, because I know the regional impact makes it kind of, but it doesn't apply at all, it's like what? Um, and then the waivers, making sure you go through those and talk about each one before they just get lumped into an approval. Um, and then laying out um for those conditions, and forgot them all, and then make a motion that includes those conditions or refer back to them. Um, and then the findings of fact. I think we could be a little bit wronger in how we possess those. Um, I know Matt Monahan had kind of set up where it was kind of built into the suggested motion language, where it just says we approve it because it meets the ordinance. Um, and talking with the town attorney, I think it would be better if they were a little bit more specific.
Why stupid?
What's, what are the specific facts about this that made you say yes? Um, the ZBA actually does a really good job, I think, after, so they approve an application, everyone stands up and leaves. You know, everyone runs out and they go, okay, let's do findings of facts, and they actually lay out very specific. Um, we find this because in the specific instance, I don't know, what I'm trying to think of last night with the frontage, one of it was that because it's on a private internal street, we think the impacts to frontage aren't as important as um, and um, because it's a minimalist um very variation, it's only fifty feet less than is required. So very specific reasons of why you found it reasonable, um, that are just specific to that aspect.
Uh, I think that makes sense, there's a problem though. Many of the regs that we get caught up on have like fifty things, we must find X, Y, Z, like forever, and we've done some motions where we've gone through them, and it's like, yeah, I don't know how practical it is.
So I think maybe, so maybe you do it two ways, so in the motion you do the blanket statement, we approve it because it meets our and then afterwards you try to list two or three specific that help justify it.
We often do talk about this, I'm thinking back to the cell phones, like you were the, you sitting.
This is why I'm concerned with this.
Sitting right there, you you basically summarized, I think, what a lot of people were thinking, which is, I'm trying to weigh public safety with the right of the butters. And I can't, I think I'm paraphrasing, you're hearing.
No, you're, you're saying like, I can't justify voting against this, knowing that we need cellphone coverage at the school. So that's why, that was, you were going through that during the earlier process, but we can, I guess, restate those key
Yeah.
Key re-rationals.
Yeah, and for, and I'm trying to think of examples of ones that the ZBAS, for the brewery, when they um got their variants for the manufacturing use, they, one of their findings of facts was the brewery use is so similar to a restaurant, which is transmitted here, so, you know, it's a specific to that situation. Just justifies very precisely. Um.
This case is very often put in the front of the binder, cause it would be very helpful for the process.
Alright, um, like I said, if anyone has comments, happy to adjust. Just meant to be a tool. We try not to forget what's up.
So I, you gave the, there's enough that you have some. Yeah. It comes down to excuse. They have residential, they have apartment buildings, they have a restaurant, a daycare facility that they have planned to put in there. And then they have two R and D buildings. Is that allowed by the excuse?
About the, the mix between commercial and residential about yours and Zoom.
Yeah, actually, can I get it to put in just a lot of them?
Are you referring to the, the mix between commercial and residential?
The commercial is not the problem, I don't think. Well, they didn't put anything in yet, they want. In, in particular, because of proximity to the restaurant that they had laid out and showed a plan on, as well as the childcare facility that they're planning on putting. R and D to me means that there are wet laps and dry laps within that facility. And with that there is a they are allowed to exhaust into our atmosphere poisons to protect the people inside of their life. And I have very concerned about childcare and people in the restaurant, as well as the people there. Because we looked at the ACI CH, I believe it is and OSHA, and they kind of, they kind of out specific home yields that people are allowed to be exposed to. Actually, before we get too much further, this is when they're actually here, when it does, and I'm not showing us going to be, is really when we need to hear this. You know, in in what's, you know, is really, I mean, to go over some here, just as as your question, it's fine. Um, but we're not going to have that, I don't know, really, they're not here to present, so I'm not sure how fine it is.
I might just say, I want to jump to conclusion about what R and so, but the question is, is R and D, uh, as as they're proposing allowed use?
Yes.
Probably, yes.
So, um, in the committed uses, number eleven is research and development facilities and laboratories, specifically committed.
Right, but what is a research and development lab? Another question, so you're raising good questions that would come up, right, I mean, if they're putting provoke an issue here, but if they're putting some sort of a research lab of viruses in there, we might say that's probably not compatible with the neighborhood with your other use or whatever, right? So those would all be reasons for, or things for us to consider, but we have like no idea what, when they say R and D. Cause I think they talked about it before, and they were like, well, the brewery, that's literally what they said. Yeah.
What those actually used to be, I think they, they lean on the flex um to obviously allow.
So, I mean, I think from your point of, you know, with the buildings of, you know, what emissions would be allowed? And and I guess the the question is, is, you know, what control do we have over that? Versus with, you know, of, you know, is that something in in an R and D situation? You know, do we need to have some, some limits or regulations on emissions?
Absolutely.
I mean, I have to say, research and development facility is so broad and vague. Because it could be an R and D facility for robotics. Or a brewery, or, but but lumping it in with, in laboratories is is interesting to me.
Yeah, and if you approve this, I mean, each use that goes in there doesn't come back. You know, when they have vacant space for, you know.
Well, what they would do is, right, they would come, they have to come to you and say, this is the proposal, is it? And you'd have to make a judgment, administrative decision on whether it's a R and B or lab.
Right, and it was something that doesn't and that'd be a change of views, they would come back.
That's the question. Good question.
They haven't made an application to the firm for yet. They'd had their conceptual consultation, and they went through the zoning board, which just happened Tuesday night, but that, we don't have any other applications yet. Absolutely.
Yeah.
But, when we do butters.
In the newspaper and on our website as well.
Yep. It'd be the third Thursday of the month, you know, I tend to to look before that, you know, we can afford to see what post it is. You know, yeah, that's, that's when we meet, you know, you want to come down for some excitement, you're always welcome. You should have been here for the cell phone. There is a in in alternates get to participate.
Once in a while.
Once in a while, they'll always get the vote, or you can get, you always get your opinion out there and your thoughts and.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
There was one McDaniel's. Thank you. What I remember.
You get that a lot, dude?
I don't, but it, it's something that actually bothers him and has around 75 years. So to this day. Did we meet for standing? You want to wait there? Yeah, I mean, these minutes that there we got first way and you like nothing. So.
Take over minutes.
I can. I'm making notes to set those aside until next.
See these knitting tests next month.
Okay, we'll hold on to that if you want to put them in a pile.